Councilwoman Jan Perry, this is the special meeting of the Energy and Environment Committee. Today is Wednesday, November the 17th, 2010. We are in room 1060, City Hall. The time is about 2:35 PM. We are going to bounce around a little bit so we can leave time for item one. And Mr. CLA, I think we're going to take item two first, is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair. Rafael Peredo with the CLA's office. Item number two relates to DWP report, relative proposed generator interconnection agreement with the Intermountain Power Agency for the interconnection of the Adelanto Solar Power Project.
Thanks. Okay, who's here to make the staff report?
Bill Glaz, Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, Solar Energy Development Manager.
And Jack Whitesnager, Assistant Director of Power Engineering. And what we have here is, for approval, is an interconnection agreement, a generation interconnection agreement with the Intermountain Power Agency and the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. The DWP is planning to construct, operate, and maintain a 10-megawatt solar photovoltaic generating facility on the existing Adelanto switching station. The Adelanto switching station is owned by DWP and it's immediately adjacent, the Adelanto converter station, which is owned by the Intermountain Power Agency. Between the two facilities, there's a lot of shared facilities, and it was determined that it was most economic and safe to interconnect the solar photovoltaic generator, which will be on DWP's side, to the IPA's equipment. And this here is the agreement that will allow us to do that. It's already been approved by the Board of Water and Power Commissioners as well as the IPA Board. And it's here because it's an agreement that will last up until, I believe, it's June of 2025.
How many megawatts is this project going to produce once it comes online?
I believe it's about, the energy is a...
I think it's 20 gigawatt hours a year, 20,000 megawatt hours a year. A 10-megawatt facility producing 20,000 megawatt hours per year.
And then, now I understand the cost of the solar project implementation is close to $44 million. How was this project funded?
This project is funded through our qualified energy conservation bonds.
Yeah, this is, this is a project that we were awarded qualified energy conservation bond funding for from the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. So it's, provides very low interest financing and is a tremendous benefit to the project to have that low a financing.
And will the department own this facility outright?
Yes.
Okay. And then, what is the, what are the specific upgrades called for through the interconnection agreement?
The specific upgrades are, is, we have a cable that comes from the solar field, and as soon as it crosses the property line, then that cable now belongs to the, it'll be paid for and installed by DWP, but it'll be, that'll be the point where, so it'll be a cable, it'll be a circuit breaker, it'll be associated, controls, monitoring, metering, and protection equipment, and then it'll be attached to a station service, an existing station service bus, electrical bus. And so, that equipment will be owned by the Intermountain Power Agency.
Okay. All right, that's fine, thank you. We don't have any cards on this item. I'll just have to move this as a communication because we don't have a quorum in committee right now. So, thank you.
Recommend approval?
Yeah.
Okay.
Number two.
That leaves item number one, which is a discussion item.
All right.
PA Consulting to discuss review of the Los Angeles Business Council's 600-megawatt solar feed-in tariff policy proposal.
All right, PA Consulting. And I have some cards, but I'll take that after you make your presentation and we go through our questions.
Good afternoon, I'm Andrew Ray with PA Consulting, and I led the review of the LA Business Council Feed-in Tariff Policy Report, joined by my colleague Mark Hagan, who worked with me closely on the report. The LA Business Council has proposed a feed-in tariff policy that would result in 600 megawatts of new solar power in Los Angeles. The policy supports the development of solar energy by offering long-term purchase agreements to developers of solar projects based on estimated cost of development plus a reasonable return for the developers. We've examined the LABC proposal as well as the analysis supporting the accompanying report. We do believe that the feed-in tariff proposed by LABC would drive rapid development of solar power. It would offer a mechanism for broad participation in solar via a range of players and create some local jobs for as long as projects are being built under the feed-in tariff. However, a feed-in tariff of the size and design proposed by LABC offers several challenges that must be addressed prior to adoption. 600 megawatts of new solar power is a significant amount of power, and to do all 600 megawatts under a feed-in tariff is more than what was originally proposed as the total solar power in LEDWP's earlier draft of their Integrated Resource Plan. I will, I will clarify that LEDWP had released late yesterday evening a new IRP, and so haven't had a chance to review that yet, so these numbers are based on the prior draft. Large amounts of distributed solar generation, we believe, could and probably will require extensive transmission upgrades and pose reliability issues if not planned and integrated properly. So the size of a fit, the timing of the rollout, and the areas that would be rolled out first are things that would have to be closely planned with LEDWP's system planners. While the tariffs for large-scale development envisioned by FIT are competitive with expected costs for utility projects, the cost of proposed generation for residential rooftops is significantly higher than the cost of large utility plan solar projects. The administration of a fit can be complex and difficult. There are lots of issues in terms of how the program is managed, how the tariff is constructed, how consumers are provided information on vendors, how vendors are selected. It's actually quite a complicated program, and if not very well-designed and very well-managed, could result in much higher costs. These advantages and challenges need to be examined carefully prior to the adoption of a fit proposal. We also believe, as we'll talk about in the report, that whether it be a feed-in tariff policy, utility solar, or other types of renewable programs, all of this needs to be carefully integrated into the department's Integrated Resource Plan and looked at in a holistic way so that the city and the council can decide what's the most cost-effective way to implement whatever renewable or conventional power choices that they want, how much solar they want, and under what type of tariff structure. I'm going to cover just some basic LABC conclusions and PA's assessment of those. So in the LABC report, they conclude that LA County has over 19,000 megawatts of solar potential, and the recommended tariff structure would drive 600 megawatts of solar generation. We do believe LABC conducted a rigorous review of solar potential and solar economics based on recent solar costs and reasonable solar, reasonable economic assumptions. We found the report to be very well-done, and in most cases, we thought their methodology was, was robust. In terms of rate impacts, LABC concludes that the fit would have a small impact of .48 cents per month on the average ratepayer bill, with development in later years actually reducing costs for ratepayers. We believe that based on their original report, the rate impacts are likely to be higher. LABC assumes avoided costs that are not consistent with costs in the LEDWP IRP documents. We think much more rigorous analysis of avoided costs and reliability upgrades is needed, as well as comparison with other solar development options. I think we really would recommend that LEDWP and LABC work closely together. The only way you'll really get to the, how much will the cost to reinforce the system is to have the DWP system planners work closely with, here's where we need to upgrade, here's how much it will cost, here's the arrange, here's the array of solar technology we can deploy, and in what regions. In terms of job creation, the LABC study said that it would create 11,000 direct jobs in the city of Los Angeles. In meetings that we had with LABC, this was clarified as job years, which means that it would be approximately 1,100 jobs for 10 years. Using the same reference and looking at the same report that LABC did, we calculated an average of 835 direct jobs would be supported during the 10 years of FIT, plus an additional 1,160 indirect jobs. While LABC's report provides a thoughtful and in-depth evaluation of FIT design considerations, the proposal requires a more detailed, detailed evaluation of cost impacts using a methodology consistent with LEDWP's Integrated Resource Planning efforts. This should consider both the cost of the tariff relative to other generation sources, as well as a comparison to other solar development options. The evaluation of options should address reliability concerns and be performed with the same assumptions and methodology used for other resource evaluations in the IRP. An example of that is a common gas forecast. Since natural gas plants are likely to be the, the alternative plants when you're looking at new base power plants, there's, and it's the alternative, it's the fuel on the margin, everyone should use the same gas forecast. That way, we're dealing with apples to apples instead of apples to oranges, and right now, that's not the case in the two reports. Just briefly, I'll cover what a solar feed-in tariff is. So a feed-in tariff or FIT is a policy focused on supporting the development of new renewable energy projects by offering long-term purchase agreements for the sale of renewable electricity. A feed-in tariff focuses exclusively on the development of solar energy, of solar feed-in tariff. Under a FIT, utilities are mandated to provide access to the grid and buy electricity from projects meeting requirements at specified rates under purchase agreements that typically range from 10 to 20 years in duration. Rates are known in advance of project investment, and schedules are not changed once a purchase agreement is signed. This reduces developer risk, improves access to financing, and lowers the cost of development. Feed-in tariffs may be considered alternatives or complements to centrally-planned utility projects or traditional RFPs for renewable procurement. A cost-based FIT bases rates on the actual cost of solar development. A values-based FIT bases rates on alternative generation costs, adjusting for any benefits of solar generation. The mechanisms for how rates are set and how projects qualify for inclusion in the program, how much power is purchased under the program, and other details of the program, how the program is administered can vary widely across feed-in tariffs, but we think are essential to the success. So, dealing with all of those issues, and then agreeing on governance on a going-forward basis, how, how the actual tariff will be adjusted, what indexes it will be constructed of, and what branch of the city will actually work with DWP or oversee DWP are all really critical issues in making sure the program would be successful. Going to skip ahead a few pages to page number nine. So in the previous draft to the one released last night of LEDWP's IRP, they contemplated a range of 660 megawatts to 1,560 megawatts of new solar development in total. So that's large centrally-planned utility solar, potentially some feed-in tariff solar, other types of incentives, but their total, under their low end, is what's envisioned in the LABC study. So that's a significant amount of solar, 660 megawatts, in view of what LEDWP's current IRP plan is. You know, whether that's the right number or not is, will obviously be the subject of discussion as the IRP itself is reviewed, but that's, that's their current planning assumption. Under draft scenarios considered by the department, higher solar development results in higher rates than would be incurred through either traditional power generation, in this case primarily natural gas, or wind generation. So, right now, solar is a high-cost renewable source of power. Projects are assumed to cost between 179 and 217 megawatt-hours to build and operate. Avoided costs are based on actual changes in generation and procurement costs incurred by the department, assuming a range of natural gas and CO2 prices. Economic development benefits have not been specifically quantified in the IRP. One of the core tenets of the LABC study is that for a program like their FIT to be successful, you have to, one, believe in solar as something that's important and essential to LA. You have to believe in the economic benefits that are not directly the power benefits. So the report talks about a leap of faith, and we think that's an accurate description, which is, it's really a policy objective, and if you believe in the policy objective, then FIT, if it's well-designed and closely-integrated into the IRP and DWP's planning, is a good way to get there. But first, you really have to have that policy discussion, and probably the IRP is the right place to do that. LEDWP's IRP has not specifically evaluated the cost and performance trade-offs of instituting a solar feed-in tariff relative to other mechanisms to develop solar generation. These may include the development of remote utility-scale solar sites, so these are large sites, either managed directly by the department or under contract with transmission systems linking them into Los Angeles. Utility plan development within the LA Basin, including development on city-owned properties, and as you know, the city owns a lot of property and a lot of large-scale rooftops. Continued incentives for solar development, similar to those offered today by LEDWP and currently in discussion at the council as to what will happen with that particular program. And then a feed-in tariff as proposed by LABC. Feed-in tariffs do offer some advantages compared to other solar development mechanisms, but they also prevent some challenges. Some of the advantages are, they provide certainty of payment and lower risk for independent developers, which gets you participation in the program, and that's been an issue in some of the other utility programs. Allows customers to maximize the solar potential of their roofs by selling power back to the utility. When coupled with a cap on qualified megawatts, provides a known limit to a utility's cost under the program. So you can scale the program, design the size, and then stick to it. It allows full capture of tax incentives that may not be available to a municipal utility that does not pay taxes. Mark, can you cover the disadvantages while I deal with my throat?
Sure, yeah.
Give him a break, yeah.
Mark Hagan with PA Consulting. Some of the disadvantages, which we touched on earlier, one is that the small-scale solar projects, at least the residential rooftop projects, tend to be more expensive than larger utility plan projects. Second, solar may be developed in areas which, from a transmission planning perspective, aren't really optimal for the system. So if you think of a transmission system wants to have generation in some places and load in other places, that, if you do a feed-in tariff, the utility has no control over where those installations would go, and would be responsible for upgrading the transmission system regardless of whether that makes sense for which way the power needs to flow. And that, if not managed properly, could create actually more cost than envisioned in the report that we reviewed. And then third, I think setting the tariff to achieve the desired result is a complex process. So, there have been case studies, which we, we skipped through here, whether in Spain, for example, where the tariff was set too high initially, there was too much development, the, the costs to the government were too high, and then they had to cut back on subsidies, and it caused a crash in the market. Managing the process for where to set the tariff as the cost of solar is changing, as subsidies are changing from the federal government, can be complex, and you need a regulatory body or some informed body to be managing that consistently in a process that's clear for people to plan around it. And a poorly-developed process could be difficult.
Mr. Grecorian has a question.
Just a quick question on the point that you made about, about connection. So, the plan would contemplate that the generator would pay for the costs of connection, I assume, but the utility would have to bear infrastructure upgrades necessary for the integration with the overall grid and to make sure that power was going from place to place in the most efficient way?
Yeah, I think that's, that's one way it could be done. I think that entire discussion would fall under the, the details part that we're discussing as being not fully fleshed out just yet, as far as who exactly would pay for who.
Typically what's been done in other places that have had Feds?
That's right, the generator would, would pay for connection, and the utility would pay to make sure the power that's showing up in new places can get to the demand centers where people need it.
Okay. All right, Mr. Alarcon is here for the record, too. Okay, go ahead. Are you ready? Are you okay?
I'm good. I'm as good as I'm going to be today, so. Think, we, if anyone has questions on our methodology...
I'd like for you to go through it first, and then I'm going to have JR come up.
Okay.
Then I'm going to, you can stay up here, too, and then we'll ask questions, and then I'm going to do the cards.
Okay. So, we examined the LABC proposal as well as the analysis supporting its report. We reviewed two reports published by LAC outlining their proposed feed-in tariff design principles and calculations. Those are Designing an Effective Feed-in Tariff for Greater Los Angeles, which provides an overview of silver, solar policy, Worldwide Feed-in Tariffs and Design Options, and then Bringing Solar Energy to LA, which details the feed-in tariff design parameters. We had interviews with LABC. We also had interviews with LEDWP. We conducted research, spoke with other people involved in similar programs. We reviewed other feed-in tariffs, solar programs, and review of articles summarizing the impacts of solar development and feed-in tariff design options. We do want to compliment LABC in terms of, we thought the quality of the work they did was outstanding, they used credible sources. So while we can take issue with their natural gas projections or what they think the rate impact on a consumer will be, we think the report was well-done, and we think the, the numbers and the mechanics can be trued up relatively easily, particularly if they're meshed with the department's forecasts, which we think is a reasonable way to do it. So everybody's using one set of gas forecasts, or coal prices, or whatever the case may be. We focused our analysis of LABC's report on feed-in tariff design elements, solar economic potential, rate impacts, and job creation. The LABC proposal is 600 megawatts over a 10-year period. The original proposal was 60 megawatts a year roughly for over 10 years. Three distinct rates and targeted capacity levels are in it, so 100 megawatts of small-scale rooftops, less than 50 megawatts, 300 of over 50, and 200 of ground-mounted solar. Initial rates are reduced by 5% each year as long as targeted capacity levels are met. Mark, do you want to cover page 14?
Sure, sure. Basically, the tariff designed by LABC, in general, is modeled after tariff design that's used in Germany, or, and also has been adopted, say, as a, as a best practice for feed-in tariff design by various experts in the field in the reports we've reviewed. Some of the key characteristics, their cost-based tariff levels, so they're, basically, they look at the cost of what it costs to do a solar project and set the tariff so that the people installing the solar project will earn a reasonable return on their investment. So the trick is to make it not too high and not too low, but that's the principle of it. Stable payment terms over 20 years so people know what they'll get paid by the utility. A simple application process with a non-refundable deposit to discourage projects without a serious chance of being built. So basically, you make it easy enough for people to apply for this, but you want to make sure that at least the people applying are credible applicants for the program. Predictable reductions in rates, so the expectation is that solar costs will come down over time, and so you don't want to set a flat rate, and then you find out when solar costs come down, suddenly too many people are participating and costs have gone up. So, this is built into their proposal. And then differentiated tariffs to incentivize participation across different sectors. So it costs more to put solar on your rooftop at home than it does to do it in a large installation in the desert. You pay those people different prices so that everybody has a chance to participate. Obviously, that has a trade-off as far as the cost of the program as well. And the LABC feed-in tariff differs dramatically from other solar purchase agreements currently in California, and the fact that it is cost-based versus value-based, and by that, I mean that it's based on the cost of developing solar, whereas other programs are based on the utility's alternative to buying that solar power. So, and we think the cost-based model will result in higher rates in early years, and, but drive higher participation, and so there are some trade-offs in those models.
As I mentioned in the opening remarks, we think LABC's analysis of the solar economic potential and tariff levels required for development is sound and rigorous. So I, I think we find no issues with it at all. The actual tariff levels, I think they would agree in their report are illustrative, that the real tariffs would be based on actual costs at the time the program is implemented. So, in our interview with them, they agreed that, in the first report, I believe it was done about 18 months ago, that much of that data was collected. So, you would update the, the actual rates and tariffs based on today's costs. So they'd be different. We think they'd be higher than what was in the original report, but that could all, you know, that could change certainly. But we believe they'd be higher than what they were, and I think everyone agrees that you would do it at the moment in time when you design the program, and then construct the right indexes to adjust each year afterwards for new entrance into the program.
Mr. Alarcon?
I just, I just have a question. This essentially is giving people to capture solar energy and put money in their pockets. I mean, that's basically what, what we're allowing them to do. So the question is, how can we ensure that the city's process for doing this will give everybody an opportunity to put a few pennies back in their pocket, as opposed to just going to those who can make large investments going in and leave everybody else out? So how can we do that so that, and theoretically, there could be constituencies that, that sue, or feel they're left out of the equation, and, and it violates their, their rights to public government processes.
We talked a lot, a little bit about those issues with LABC and with the department, because you're right, how you roll it out, if you roll it out based on the areas that need the least reinforcement in the transmission system, and I'm just going to make one up, let's just say for the sake of argument that Chatsworth has great transmission and you could just roll it out. So you say, okay, so we'll do a pilot program in Chatsworth. Well then, every other district in the city wouldn't get it, right, because it needs more, more economics to make it work. So I think you have to work very closely on the design of the program to make sure that it is open and fair, that it recognizes there are system limitations that have to be managed. There are also, you know, what vendors should be allowed into the program? What you don't want are people to be taken advantage of by products that haven't been fully tested or vetted. You could say let the market decide, but in something like this, there should be a certain amount of information made available, there should be educational materials. The department is perhaps the best situated to provide information on the type of technologies that are available. All of that stuff needs to happen, how it's rolled out, how the rates are done, how people get the opportunity to sell back into the grid. All of those things are not as simple as they might sound, and so, a very well-constructed program, we think is essential to prevent exactly what you said, and I think LABC would be the first to admit that the devil is in the details, and they haven't worked out all the details yet.
Want to keep going, or?
I think we, we talked about the rate impacts would be revised based on using the same assumptions as DWP and getting more current costs, so I think we've covered page Mark, do you want to just clarify the job issue, since it comes up in each meeting?
Yeah, I think what we want to be clear is that our estimate of the job creation, which was based on many of the same sources that LABC used, is not, it's not very different from LABC's estimate. What we think is, needs to be clarified is the headline that was being used on the study suggested that the, the program would... suggested that the program would create 11,000 jobs in the city of Los Angeles, and later that was clarified to be actually 1,100 jobs for 10 years. And that's just, wasn't obvious until you actually went into the details. Otherwise, our estimates of job creation are similar and maybe even slightly higher when you take into account indirect jobs, meaning the people who aren't directly installing the projects but are supporting those installations.
Right.
So I bring us to the summary and next steps, and I think our most important conclusion is we do believe a fit has a place within the resource planning process for the city of Los Angeles. But as I mentioned a minute ago, the devil is in the details, and there are a lot of details to be worked out. The program is not ready to be implemented as described in the report today. There's a lot of technical issues that have to be worked out with the department, rate issues that need to be clarified, governance issues. All of those things have to be worked out, so it's a well-designed and cost-effective program. We also believe that for many of the issues that arise as a result of the fit, the appropriate place to deal with those, debate those, and look at how much fit solar resources there are versus large utility scale versus other types of installations is really in the integrated resource plan so that you can have a full review of all of the alternative costs and all of the other generation, and look at it in a holistic way.
If you want to take a break, I'm gonna have JR come up.
Sure.
And do the business council presentation. JR, if you can try to do it in 15 minutes or...
Sure.
Okay, great. That would be wonderful. And then we'll get you back up for questions, and then I'll do the cards.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Well, I want to thank the committee for focusing on this issue, and I want to thank PA for their review of our study. I completely agree with all of the issues of concern that PA raised, and I like to address those kind of one at a time. But I want to start by just focusing in on what we seem to agree on and where there's need for further study. I am appreciative, as the sort of intellectual author of the study, that they found it to be rigorous to use valid economic assumptions, high-quality data, and to have employed methods to calculate the tariffs and the solar capacity that are valid and rigorous. I'm also...
Okay, thank you.
We just wanted to make you guys feel welcome.
The other area in which there seemed to be no disagreement in terms of the methods and ultimately the substance is the job creation impacts of the study. So except for distinguishing job years from jobs, they actually come to slightly higher numbers for job creation than we do when you include the indirect jobs. So I think on those two points, we feel very solid. The suggestion that we utilize DWP's true avoid-it cost is a very important suggestion. And we did meet with DWP and ask questions about their avoid-it cost and also the cost of upgrading the grid, and we weren't able to determine kind of what those avoid-it costs were or what the grid upgrade costs were. So the first thing that we did was we used the industry standard for what's reasonable for a renewable energy investment, which is the market price reference, which is what investor-owned utilities in the state have to compare their renewable projects to, to demonstrate to the state regulator that these projects have a reasonable cost. So that was our initial approach. That was our approach about 18 months ago. We did submit a revised program design that utilized significantly lower peak-period natural gas costs. We dropped the cost from 11, about 11 and 1/2 cents a kilowatt hour, down to about 8.7, and also made some other adjustments for cost trends that had developed over the last 18 months, and also restructured the phase-in of the 600 megawatts so that in the near term, invest it less in solar capacity, but that capacity basically increased into the future so that we were securing more capacity in the future when the cost of solar would be less than the cost of natural gas. And if that assumption of 8 cents for delivered peak-period natural gas is right, solar achieves cost parity with peak-period natural gas delivered in 13 years out of the 30-year program. It does lead to slightly higher maximum household subsidies that are required. The subsidies go up from 40 cents to 79 cents a month, but that subsidy is only required the first 13 years. The last 17 years, the cost savings go above a dollar per household. So again, if we take a long-run view, this is a program that requires a subsidy upfront, yields larger cost savings over its lifetime, again, if these assumptions are correct. And ultimately, in present value terms, saves ratepayers $65 million. That's over the course of the 30-year program. I think it's also important to consider the impacts and the utility's ability to incorporate this distributed solar. This reliability and costs are absolutely critical, and I think a closer partnership with DWP to determine what the right avoid-it costs are is essential. I think it's also essential for a program like this to be successful that DWP take ownership and design the program in a way that can maximize its benefits and minimize its costs. And the way that could happen, the Sacramento Municipal Utility District has a fit, and they actually direct it, solar projects to those parts of its grid where the benefits would be greatest and the costs lowest. They actually provided a map. And projects that were in those high-benefit, low-cost areas were advantaged as a result. The concern about basically too much power too quickly is something that we've focused on from the very beginning. We recognize Spain's mistakes, and to deal with those, we propose that each year, the amount of solar power in this program be capped. So we're never gonna get, at for a given price, too much participation. We're gonna get exactly the participation we want, because we're capping the program year to year and controlling the escalation of the capacity. And as was pointed out, we strongly advocate, in order that the cost savings of new solar technologies be passed on the ratepayers, that the tariffs paid out every year be reevaluated, or at least every two years. Just to address Councilman Alarcon's concern about inclusiveness, this was also a concern from the very beginning, and it's why, as PA indicated, we've segmented the market. We have a different tariff based on the cost of small projects for single-family homes and small commercial entities. We have a tariff and capacity that targets the middle part of the segment, which would be multifamily homes, commercial, industrial, and then the most cost-effective, small-scale, in-basin utility. So inclusiveness is important, and it's expressed in the design of the program in those following ways. Just one other point to, I think, the highlight off the PA presentation. A feed-in tariff and net metering and in-basin utility-owned solar, the reason that we would do those is not because they're gonna be cheaper than out-of-basin solar. We know they're not going to be. The reason that we would invest in any of those three programs is because they create local green jobs, and they stimulate demand for green technologies, solar technologies. There are strategies, not big enough by themselves to matter, but together, to stimulate a market and hopefully attract manufacturing and other clean tech that would make the region more competitive. So that's the... If you don't appreciate the job creation benefits and the economic development benefits, there really isn't a strong argument for any kind of in-basin solar, whether it's municipal-owned, a net metering, or a feed-in tariff. Those are the benefits, as well, of course, of having households and businesses take responsibility themselves for the generation of clean power here within our city. So I think I'll stop there.
Okay, great. Andrew, why don't you stay there, and Andrew and your voice assistant, if you need it.
Mark, can you have a bigger voice?
Just in case he breaks up.
I got some medicine, I've said.
Okay.
Thanks to one of the council members, so I may make it through this.
Okay, okay. I wanted you to go over again, appreciate your findings on the 600-megawatt proposal and what you feel is viable. I just wanted you to break out for us in a little bit greater detail the areas that neither needed further analysis, review, or modification.
So I think the first, and I think we've both talked about it, is to truly understand the department's reinforcement costs, the engineering and upgrades that they have to deploy. How much of that would happen anyway as part of their continuing system upgrades? How much is new? What's exactly needed and what you can get for that? Because as you understand that, you can then design an effective rollout program, you get a much better view of the total cost of the projects. And I think that's an area where close cooperation with the department is essential. And, you know, one of the things that we've found in this is, this is really sort of a pleasant situation where I think all of the parties actually sort of agree on the basic policy objectives. When we met with the department, they were supportive of a feed-in tariff. I think their concerns were largely, we don't want it to get too big, too fast, because it will cost us all sorts of money, and we don't understand all of the costs because of the engineering. But I think they were generally supportive of it. So I think you have all of the key players in the city fairly supportive of the program, so I think it's a matter of getting people in the room and doing the details. So first is the system reinforcement. Second is truly agreeing on the components of the tariff design, so the natural gas price forecast, the other avoided costs that go in, the prices of other renewables, and the prices of other conventional power sources. And I think because the department's latest IRP is out, and hopefully has quite a bit of that information, that's a discussion that could take place fairly quickly. And there should be, as I said, I haven't seen the draft from last night, but there should be enough information in it to make that discussion, I think, pretty robust and pretty quick. So, but I think that's another essential area. How you design the program to maximize the job creation benefit, I think, is also essential. If you just want to get, you know, installation-type jobs, that's relatively simple. If you want to stimulate manufacturing to the extent that that's possible in the city, if you want to get higher-value jobs, all of those sort of things. Do you want to form partnerships with the trade schools and the community colleges, et cetera, et cetera? So I think the job creation benefits are another area where the devil is in the details. I think those are the key ones.
No, I agree, and I would just point out that we didn't ignore DWP upgrade costs. We factored into the ratepayer model $100,000 per megawatt to upgrade, which is $60 million over 10 years that we assume DWP will have to spend to accommodate this. And still, under what we think are reasonable assumptions, it's a cost-effective program over its lifetime.
Andrew, just in looking at the tariff rates proposed, do you feel that, just in your global view of things, are they fairly competitive and representative of tariff rates with other programs? And I don't know if you'd have to choose cities that are of comparable size, but regions?
So we said this in the meeting with LABC, so I'm happy to say it again. I think if you rolled out the current rates that are in their study, you would have robust take-up. It would definitely do what it's designed to do. It would incent people to sign purchase power agreements. It would be very, very effective. The rates are too attractive right now, we think. They are probably far more effective than the programs that Southern California Edison or PG&E have, because they're different in their design. And this would be much more of a stimulus or economic incentive to deploy solar than is evident with Edison's or PG&E's tariffs. So I guess my take is they are too robust based on, because of some of the buildup of what underlies them, but their design in terms of, would they be effective? Yes, they would be effective.
What do you think the issues are with the possibility of integrating full-scale 600 megawatts into our DWP infrastructure?
So as I meant...
Major issues. I know you could go on for days about that.
Yeah. Well, as I mentioned one, so if you look at the previous version, and the department can update if these numbers have changed much, but 600 megawatts was their total solar plan. So that was large-scale, small-scale, everything. So to have 600 megawatts of all smaller distributed generation may be a much more technically challenging task than one or two large-scale developments, which could be carefully planned to be integrated into the transmission system with the least possible costs. You also have issues where, so the department's load shape and where... Let's take the harbor, for example. So because of the coastal fog phenomenon, it's cloudy half the year. How you cycle that on and off, and then all of a sudden the morning clouds burn off and you've got solar, how you plan from that from a system engineering point of view, when you have a lot of distributed resources, is more difficult than if you have a big, huge 600-megawatt facility out in the desert. So the design of the system itself needs to be much more granular and well-thought-out with a more distributed program.
Do you think it's more appropriate to pursue a phased-in approach, or maybe a pilot demonstration program of maybe 50 to 100 megawatts to analyze its effectiveness over a given period of time?
On the pilot thing, I think the pilot idea is a great idea, because I think there are a lot of issues to work out. And I think how you educate consumers, how you make sure the right products are being deployed, how you train the people who are gonna do this, all of those things, I think a little bit of learning in a smaller, more contained environment would absolutely be beneficial. Whether the pilot should be 50 megawatts or 100 megawatts or 150 megawatts, I think that sort of has to be worked out as part of the, how much, you know, how much system reinforcement cost is there, and how much planning does DWP need to do. But whatever the size the policymakers think is the right size, I think a pilot is the right way to go.
On the issue of the 11,000 jobs, and I appreciate the fact that you broke it out in terms of, what was the term you used?
Job years.
Job years, that's right, job years. Was that a methodology upon which you both agreed in terms of conveying that to...
I believe we're in complete agreement.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Now, in the same issue on the 48 cents per month in terms of its impact on the ratepayer, was that a methodology upon which you both agreed in terms of that calculation?
Yeah, we don't find any fault with how the rate is calculated. It's what goes into the rate that we think should be trued up with the DWP planning assumptions.
All right.
But their calculation of the rate is sound.
And so then you would agree that the initial rates go down 5% each year as targeted capacity levels are met? You seem to be in agreement on that.
I think if everything goes as planned.
So we know the DAWP is in the process of developing their IRP, and that provides us with a good opportunity to flow all of this into that, and I guess to take your word to get more granular or molecular. What do you think, I mean, at first blush, what do you think the possibility is that we could integrate a fit program into the IRP that actually works not only for the utility, but for the ratepayers and for the private sector community?
I think it's high. I mean, I think this is a quality piece of work, and I think because of that, it lays a sound foundation. I think in our discussions with the department, they have a willingness and appreciation that the fit program has a role to play. I think they may debate about the size of it as well, and that's a good debate to have. I think they may debate about the size of it as well, and that's a good debate to have. But I think they, they see that it can do what it's designed to do. So I think if, if everyone sort of works in the same way we're working together in this room today, I'd say the chances are much higher than I would have expected previously. And, and I think, very good.
Yeah.
If I might, please. I, I agree. And just in terms of the pilot project and starting small notion that was, was, was discussed, we completely agree. And in fact, you know, our, our latest program proposal would be 40 megawatts over the first three years, and then scale up, if, if that's appropriate. I want to point out that that's smaller than the mayor's proposal two years ago, which was 50, 50, 50 the first three years. So there's, there is that. In terms of the implementation details, we, we appreciate that so much that we've actually, in conjunction with the LABC, done, are in the middle of writing up an implementation guideline, or guidebook, as it were. Because our, our initial goal was to try and find a program design that was cost-effective for ratepayers. The next goal was to figure out how to actually design the administration, the application process, the interconnection, allocate risks, allocate costs. And so the, the, there is a lot of thought being given right now to how this would actually be implemented. It ideally, I think, has been said by all parties, would, well, not just be beneficial, it's essential that, that DWP owned the program, that it be their program, that they look earnestly at how to maximize the benefits and minimize their costs, because ultimately, that's what's going to be good for ratepayers, and make the program work.
Just a quick, quick question from, who's here from DWP, representing the department? Who wants to come up? I just want to get a quick, something on the record from the department. Is there, just grab a chair from the front row. Just give us your take on, and this, I'll obviously say who you are. Give us your take on the FIT proposal, PA's findings, and whether or not you feel this, this is a broad question, but I'm gonna, it's just a place to start, so don't get scared. I just want to know what you think of the proposal, the findings, and whether or not you think the department can work together with the business council, and with what PA Consulting has done to integrate into the IRP. And I'm not putting a timeframe on it, we're not even there yet. I just want to get your take on it.
Just from a high-level councilwoman, I'm sorry, my name is Aaron Beniman, I'm the Senior Assistant General Manager of the Power System. Just on a high level, we, we just reviewed the report, we got it last night, the PA put out. As Andrew mentioned, you know, the concept of feed-in tariff is part, we've been discussing it, it's part of our IRP. With the proper revenue streams and the proper funding, and also the policy guidelines, you know, to make sure it's a successful, we agree that it has a place in our plans, you know, to implement it. Again, you know, with all the, the lessons learned from programs and stuff, we want to make sure we don't repeat the same mistakes as we rolled this out. So we want to be very, very structured and very forward-looking, and put the program that, that's sustainable for a long time.
And I also, I appreciate your, your candor on that. And, and you know, today is a briefing, and in informational purposes only, because what I hope to do after today, and then, and have participation from the committee members and the stakeholders, is to take a step back, and also PA and LABC and the department, look at this within the context of the IRP, and then come up with a methodology or a strategy as to how we would proceed. And that we could all be within reasonable, I won't say agreement, but within a reasonable, you know, area of some agreement as to how we move forward, and then come back again and take more public testimony. Which is, Mr. Vicar, or Mr. Alarcon, would you like to say anything right now? Okay.
I've got just a couple of questions.
No, you can ask them now, and then I'm gonna, I may, I may let you take over. Meeting in 15 minutes, but that's okay.
Okay, a couple of questions. First of all, I was intrigued by the discussion of large-scale versus smaller-scale projects and their impact on, on system integration. And I, it makes sense that if you have a few smaller projects, it's easier just to plan for that. But don't you, isn't there benefit in having a larger number of smaller projects in terms of diversification of the supply? So that weather changes, you know, where, areas where it's cloudy, those sorts of things are, are spread out over the city, rather than concentrated on a few small, a few larger projects, where you have a much bigger need to back them up if they become unavailable?
I was gonna say, I'd let, I'd let the Assistant General Manager answer that question, but-
Yeah, you guys shouldn't have left. Come on up, Otto. Can you just speak for a minute about the, the relative advantage or disadvantage of large-scale versus smaller-scale? I mean, our discussion earlier was that larger-scale project, a few large-scale projects create advantages for integration. But it seems to me, just as a layperson, that you, you lose some advantages of diversification of supply if you have fewer projects.
So from, from controls perspective, from system operations perspective, as Andrew mentioned, a large solar project can be controlled from a maintenance perspective, production perspective, and also the forecasting tools that we have, that we could forecast, you know, 10 minutes ahead, or half an hour ahead, to see whether there's a potential of drop of energy from that source, and we could make allowances.
You'd be able to ramp your backup supplies.
So we can have our spinning reserves or things to pick up the system. But having, having many, many generators in our system will, will provide challenges for us to, first of all, you know, you know, control the source of the energy coming in, which we can solve, it's not an unsolvable problem, but it, it just multiplies the control points for us to bring to our system, and also create some safety issue of backfeed to our system that we have to be aware of, because we have linemen and workers on our distribution system that are working. So that's, that's the positives and the negatives of the both systems.
Does it at least flatten the curve, though, if you have a larger number of projects providing supply?
If we have, if we have larger, you know, many large projects in the same area, that we could have some unified control system that will make it more beneficial. So from having one central plant to having many, as we, as we multiply the numbers, the, the complexity of controls becomes higher, but it's solvable, again, you know, but-
Okay. And then going to the SMT example, which, which we mentioned, what was their, I was looking for, what was their tariff rate?
Well, they had a value-based tariff, and it varied. I think it was somewhere between about 13 and 16 cents. And it was very large projects. Only the, and, and one entity got 60% of the, the program, which is one reason why-
That's what caught my eye, because there were only six that subscribed to the entire 100 megawatts.
Right.
And we're talking about 60 megawatts a year, so-
Right.
One could assume that you could have a single, a single entity that could absorb that entire annual allotment.
I think that's one of the, the issues with the SMT design. And then you have one or two entities that control the deployment of it. They, they begin to set pricing if, if they are aggregating for others.
Right.
So we wouldn't advocate the SMT design for Los Angeles, because I think there are some good lessons to learn.
And it's not what we've proposed either.
Okay. And then just so I can understand a little bit better the model of the 5% reducing tariff if assumptions for subscriptions are, are met. Is the converse also true, then, that if subscription rates should fall short of expectations, that the tariff would need to increase? Question number one. And question number two, what, it seems to me that the, the lowest-hanging fruit, easiest projects are going to be the ones that sign up right away, and that down the road is when you're going to have to have a higher tariff to get additional subscribers to keep coming in. Is that not the case? Does it not work that way?
Well, you, you raise a couple of really important points. So we, we do expect, based on a 10-year trend, solar costs to continue to fall. They won't fall forever, there'll, there'll be some leveling out at some point. You might also expect that the most financially viable projects will be the ones that choose to apply in the early years. However, the dynamic that's going on there is, is this presumably continued increase in solar technology lowering its cost? So as costs go down, more property owners, homeowners, business owners will find it financially desirable to, to participate. And, and just to, to speak to the issue of the generousness of the tariffs, our tariffs are lower than anything else that's in the US. Right now, that's cost-based. So Gainesville or other, Ontario, North America, they, they would yield a 5% to 7% return for the average project, given the cost of capital right now. There's one other point that I, I want to raise, which is the length of the program. And this is something I, I sort of wish you guys had been able to speak more to. A pilot project is a great learning experience, but we run a risk here. If we do a very small project, we're going to be generating most of our power when the cost of solar is higher than the cost of peak period natural gas, in terms of the near-years. If, if we commit to a pilot project with the plan to expand this over time, we're guaranteeing that in the out-years, when solar is likely to be cheaper than natural gas, that's when most of the power within the program would be produced, producing cost savings for ratepayers. So there's a little bit of counterintuition here. You might think that a smaller program's going to be cheaper for ratepayers than a longer program. But if solar costs continue to fall and natural gas prices rise, as they have over the last 30 years, between 6% and 8% a year, then that's not going to be true. A longer program is actually going to be the strategy by which you, you utilize solar when, most, when it's cheaper than the peak period natural gas would be, right? So you, that's when the cost savings arise.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't you take a break, and then I'm going to call up, how many seats do we have up here? Four? Yeah, we got three, four? I'm going to call the four people up at a time. Did you take your seat back? Is there a seat? Okay, can you slide one back up there?
Without you-
There's plenty to share, yeah, that's right. All right. Okay, cool, I'll talk to you later. Okay. Thank you. At quarter of, I may ask you to finish this, if I have to step out for a second. Okay. Okay, I'm going to call David Kirsch, Cecilia Agion, Evan Gillespie, Janet Gagnon.
Good afternoon, my name is David Kirsch. I'm here on behalf of the Carpenter's Contractors Cooperation Committee, which is comprised of the 65,000 members of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenter's and its signatory contractors. And I'm here to express our support for the Business Council's Feed-in Tariff Program. This program will create a vibrant solar market to put people back to work, reduce pollution, and generate much-needed revenue. It will demonstrate to the rest of the nation that the City of Los Angeles is a leader in transitioning from fossil fuels to renewable clean energy. The, the council program offers many benefits, including the possibility of powering over 137, 37,000 households with clean energy, while producing thousands of high-wage jobs, including many foreign members in the construction industry. Our industry has been harder than any other segment of the economy, with unemployment running at 40% during this recession. Implementation of this program offers the city an immediate way to promote renewable energy and help move us out of this economic downturn. Our organization continues to spend tens of millions of dollars instead of our training facilities and specialized courses to respond to the needs of the growing green economy, including sour, solar power installation. We firmly believe that if the city is to achieve its goal of encouraging development of a strong renewable energy industry, this program and others must not be hamstrung by requirements for specialty contractor licenses that would artificially restrict the participation of all qualified and capable contractors and employees. Again, we urge the city to adopt and implement the Solar Feed Program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cecilia Agion.
Thank you very much. Cecilia Agion with Keysera Solar. We are a manufacturer of photovoltaic cells and modules headquartered in Japan, but all over the world. And I just wanted to also ask for your support on this program. And I just wanted to, on the prices that LABC, something that happened, I'm a member of the Board of CALSEA, and we were looking at SB 32 implementation, which is the feed-in tariff, that is not cost-plus, but is value-based, and is based on the NPR plus the adders. And the funny thing is, the numbers that they came up with, the value to the grid in the IOU territories came almost exactly to the prices that LABC, UCLA came up, although they came, they had a different perspective on, or methodology and had to arrive to the prices, but they were pretty much the same. So basically, they are not, although it's called cost-plus, they're very much, very close to the value proposition in terms of, in the CALSEA example, the prices came in from 18 cents, they range all the way to 20, 27, 28 cents. So I, you know, it's, it's comfort to know that they are close to value base. And also, they, on the large versus small, as a global company, we have seen that markets like Japan and Germany, they are favoring the, the smaller scale. And in fact, Japan, in, sorry, Germany installed almost four gigawatts last year on rooftops, projects below 1 megawatt. And they even stopped doing the large scale anymore for, I don't understand, I'm not technical, but having to do with the, you know, some of the reasons that we heard here before. So it's important to, to, to stimulate the small market, to create the jobs and all of that. Also, one thing that is missing in our markets is financing in Japan. In Germany, you have the village, is, has the PV power there, they, they install it in, in the basin in the city, the local bank is the one that provides the financing, and the power is sold within the territory.
Thank you.
So it's, it's really, you know, a good deal for the city, and we urge you to support it.
Evan Gillespie, then Janet Gagnon, and then Michael Kahn and Mary Louveneau. So you two can come up. Okay, Evan.
Great. Well, thanks for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Evan Gillespie, I represent the Sierra Club. We are the oldest, largest environmental organization in the country, with about 50,000 members in greater Los Angeles area. You know, and right now, across the country, our main priority is figuring out how we help cities and states figure out solutions to climate change. We're particularly interested in how to help utilities move away from coal-fired power plants. And in thinking about that transition, how we manage that transition really, really matters. There will certainly be a need for out-of-base and large-scale projects, but it's imperative that we help drive ratepayers' money into local programs that can help derive local benefits in terms of, particularly in terms of job creation. And so when we signed up to support the feed-in tariff, which we strongly encourage City Council to move forward with, we were particularly excited about the opportunity to really demonstrate in Los Angeles what we're seeing elsewhere in the country, which is that being an environmentalist can also be a job creator. And, you know, the $2 billion of investment that LABC pointed out, the 1,100 jobs every year, those are really important to the Sierra Club. You know, and reflecting back on what, we've spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks thinking about the election, and what the verdict on Prop 23 means. In Los Angeles County, 68% of people voted for strong action on climate change. I think the reason for that is twofold. Certainly, we're looking for leadership and smart climate policy at the state level. But Angelinas are also seeing the benefits of the clean energy economy. They're seeing the 500,000 jobs that have been created in the last five years in the green economy. They see the $9 billion of investment. And, you know, I think as we look at the feed-in tariff, this is a key opportunity for us to translate that public demand into smart public policy here in Los Angeles. So we strongly encourage you to move forward with the feed-in tariff. We think it's a great component to a robust renewable energy standard in Los Angeles, and appreciate your dedication and attention to this issue, and look forward to working with you going forward.
Thank you. Okay, Janet. And then after Janet will be Michael, then Mary Louveneau, and then we can add in Jessica Duba.
Hi, Janet Agnem from Solar World. We're the largest US manufacturer of solar with facilities in California and Oregon. We're German-owned, and we have seen the tremendous policy tool that a feed-in tariff is in order to create a green economy as well as green energy. You can have both benefits. I wanted to speak to a couple of points here. Transmission, in Germany, they put in over 3,000 megawatts in one year versus the 600 megawatts over 10 years that we're asking for from LABC's proposal. So I think our grids can handle it, as a proud LADWP person, recipient and ratepayer. Number two, the study that has come up, I believe, is conservative on the jobs numbers. Speaking as a manufacturer, we, we talk a lot about the solar value chain, meaning integration, developers, distributors, and manufacturers, but there's another chain within manufacturing, which is glass, aluminum, wire, paste- But there's another chain within manufacturing, which is glass, aluminum, wire, paste, other components that can also be sourced in LA if there's a market that is spurring that demand. And it all comes down to creating the demand for the products. Number three, the jobs issue. The Solar Foundation came out with a study, that's a national foundation, that there's over 100,000 solar jobs specifically in the nation, and they anticipate that job number to go up by 26%. So 26,000 new jobs in 2011. And the question is, do we want those jobs for LA, or do we want those to go to other places that have supporting policies in place for solar? Do we want those to go to San Francisco, Colorado, Vermont, New York, which are all at different phases, looking at feed-in tariffs and other supporting policies? That is the key that drives where the industry develops and pulls all of the players, as well as outside financial capital, into the marketplace. Number four, rate payers. I would ask that this program, the feed-in tariff, is wonderful because it allows everyone to participate. So the rate payers are the one being asked to pay. I think it's only fair that they have the opportunity to participate and receive from that same program if they choose to become generators. And anything less than that, I don't think is fair to all of the rate payers in LA. And I stress the point of why it's important that this feed-in tariff target all of those markets. It's the one thing that rate payers feel good about, in that they can participate in it both ways, on both sides of the equation. And I think we don't want to lose focus about the importance of the community joining in and being part of the solution, not just part of the payment plan. And the last point I would make is, we strongly urge Councils to support the fit, and I would urge that if it's within the IRP, that any solar, that LADWP, that the lion's share, come from the fit and come from in-basin, that we have certainly enough rooftop space in Los Angeles County, that the lion's share should be coming from within our borders to help create jobs for LA. Thank you.
Okay, Michael Kahn, Mary Louveneau, Jessica Duboff, are you here, Jessica? Come on up. And Tracy Chavira. Is Tracy still here? Yeah, come on up, Tracy. Okay, Michael, you're next.
Yes, thank you. I'm here to speak in support of the fit. I'm a solar power integrator. We install solar power in the LA area. A broad-based coalition of community and business leaders are supporting Cleanup LA, which is LABC's name for the solar feed-in tariff program. Given the current economic and environmental climate, where people are losing jobs and manufacturers are leaving the region, this program can play a key role in getting the city's economy back on track by putting people to work utilizing LA's own solar potential. This program is one of the best steps our city can take to promote renewable energy in Los Angeles. The economic benefits are really strong for LA's small businesses and residents. It produces cost-savings opportunities and long-term returns for energy consumers. It gives small business owners that are otherwise affected by the poor economy the opportunity to use their unused assets, which is the roof of their buildings, for an additional revenue stream. It contributes to meeting our renewable energy goals in the city. Local distributed generation is a good thing. It's a good way to enact solar power. And one of the things is in with a possible reduction of the solar rebate program, DWP, this gives a place for the solar program and the local economy from the solar program to step in and make up for the possible loss of business from a reduced solar rebate. So this is kind of a fallback program, which will be, fill in where the rebate program is going to take away jobs.
Mary Louveneau.
Hi, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Thank you for having me today. I am literally striking most of my comments because I think all of my colleagues have covered the important points. I'm Mary Louveneau, Policy Director for Global Green USA. We're an environmental nonprofit, U.S. affiliate of Green Cross, founded by Mikhail Gorbachev. And we work primarily in the area of solutions to climate change, green buildings, renewable energy, and climate policy. We also have direct technical expertise, having developed several fully solar-powered affordable housing developments in Southern California and San Diego County, and working with affordable housing developers across the country to green their projects and add solar to them, in addition to schools, which we work extensively on as well. I'm here today to support the LABC Cleanup LA program, the 600-megawatt feed-in tariff proposal. And again, without repeating everything that has been said already, the proposal is cost-effective. It has job creation potential. It's going to leverage over $2 billion worth of investment here in Los Angeles. And most importantly, to Global Green as an environmental organization, it's good for the environment. I mean, we all know that installing solar panels, we've heard all the benefits again, so I don't want to run through these. I just want to make a comment on some of the things that have been said earlier. First of all, with regard to the complexity of controls, and someone, the DWP is mentioning the complexity of controls with multiple systems, you know, spread across the city. One of the things I know that a lot of cities are looking at, and I think DWP or LA has, is the ability of the smart grid to be able to help ease some of those constraints. And I think that's something that you should continue looking at. I know that there is stimulus funding for smart grid technologies, and that is the wave of the future. As you've heard JR say, the fit needs a long-term commitment. It's the same as what the state did when they enacted CSI, the California Solar Initiative. They committed to 10 years' worth of incentives, and that was critical and fundamental to, you know, the ongoing success of that program. And thirdly, I just want to say that I haven't read the full IRP current draft, but I think that the department is recommending a much smaller level of fit. That concerns me because I don't want to see us set something up to fail. So those are my main points, and thanks for your time.
Thanks. Jessica Duboff, then Tracy Chavira, then Ken, is it, I can't read your writing.
Button.
Ken Button, and Alexandra Kravitz. Why don't you come on up? Okay, Jessica, you're next.
Good afternoon. My name's Jessica Duboff. I'm here on behalf of the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce. As a member of the Solar Feed-in Tariff Coalition, we urge the committee to support a solar fit as an important component of the city's renewable portfolio. Building a robust, local green economy in our region is a high priority for our business members. We'd like to thank the LA Business Council and the UCLA Luskin Center for all the work they have done to develop this program. California is already recognized as a leader in clean technology. In combination with the city's clean tech program and developing green business certification initiative, this is one more way in which we can showcase LA as a hub for green investment. We look forward to working with the Department of Water and Power on the implementation of a feed-in tariff program. Thank you.
All right, Tracy Chavira.
Good afternoon. Tracy Chavira, Central City Association. Let me begin by recognizing LABC and UCLA for their leadership on in-basin solar feed-in tariff, and thank them very much for presenting their proposal on two separate occasions to CCA. CCA supports the concept of a feed-in tariff. While the proposal has merit and is well-intentioned, we have not taken a position because our members have follow-up questions relative to increased rates, new jobs, residential rooftops, and how other renewable or generation sources compare to fit. Also, in light of PA's outstanding report, well, the report we just heard, we thought it would be premature to take a position when more analysis was expected. We believe that fit can work for Los Angeles, provided that it is designed and implemented correctly. But I encourage you to look closely at PA's report and consider the cost to rate payers. We all want to meet the city's 35% mark by 2020, but we must be mindful of how much it's going to cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Button, Alexandra Kravitz, and then Ryan, I think it's Minir? Come on up. And then Carolyn, it looks like Caspan? Come on up. Go ahead.
Great. My name is Ken Button. I'm the president of Varengo Solar. And as you can see today, there's a broad coalition supporting the LABC proposal, and we join that coalition and urge you to endorse it and proceed with it. I want to thank you for holding this hearing and for paying attention to this and really furthering the discussion. And I want to thank LABC and the Luskin Center for all the good work that they've done on this proposal. Solar has been a real bright spot in an otherwise gloomy economic picture. And we've heard earlier from one of the speakers about how tough it is in the trades. My business alone has hired 100 people in the last year. And so I think that puts in perspective the opportunities here. And also, I think, to echo something that was said earlier, calls into question whether the job creation estimates that we've heard are overly conservative. If we've added 100 people in the last year, to put that in perspective. The feed-in tariff has been successful elsewhere, and Varengo joins with this coalition to support the adoption of this program as part of a robust and comprehensive approach to solar in Los Angeles.
Thank you. Alexandra, and then Ryan, then Carolyn, and then James Brennan can come up. Is James Brennan still here? Come on up, James. Okay, Alexandra Kravitz is next.
Yes, that's my name. Good afternoon. I'm Alexandra Kravitz. I'm speaking on behalf of the Vote Solar Initiative. We're a solar advocacy organization, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and also thank the LABC and UCLA for their great study and for bringing this topic of conversation. I would like to put also in perspective that the feed-in tariff is one mechanism to integrate solar in a larger portfolio, and that there was a larger plan that was proposed two years ago with several components, a rebate program, a feed-in tariff, a community solar program, some utility scale and some large-scale out-of-basin. And the reason that is, I believe, because each, these are all tools in a toolkit, and each carry different costs and benefits. And as you look into integrating solar in the context of the IRP, I think it would be in the rate payer's interest to have a comprehensive way of going about doing solar, because everything has its own costs and benefits. And I would like to also echo JR's point that what is needed is a long-term commitment because in the end, it gives the industry the necessary horizon to make their investments. And that is what helps the solar costs come down. And that's it. I have one last comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, Carolyn, James, and then Jeffrey Richardson, do you want to come up? Is Jeffrey Richardson still here? All right, Ryan, you're next.
Good afternoon. Ryan Minir, Executive Director of the Los Angeles Division, the California Apartment Association. We are part of the coalition that supports the solar fit program, and it's refreshing to be at a hearing where the Sierra Club, the Chamber, Central City, and apartment owners all agree on something.
Kind of weird for you, huh?
Yeah, so I'm used to more combative hearings. So we are here today to lend our support, and ditto, everything else has been said as far as economic development and the job benefits for this program.
Excuse me. Thank you. Carolyn, James, Jeffrey, and then Argavan Sadeghi? Still here?
Yes.
Come on up. Okay, Carolyn, you're next.
My name's Carolyn Caspan, and I'm here today representing the Valley Green, the San Fernando Valley Green Team. And our mission is to develop green tech businesses and job opportunities in the San Fernando Valley. We support the feed-in tariff program. It's an important program for assisting in meeting the city's renewable energy requirements while benefiting local residents and businesses. The Valley Green Team has a number of business members who provide products and services in the solar energy sector. They're poised to grow with expansion of the market, but the market is very slow right now due to the economy. This program will expand business opportunities and provide longer-term business opportunities for these companies while enhancing the local economy. And our community colleges and trade schools are providing training in solar installation to underemployed and unemployed workers. And this program will help provide job opportunities for those local workers. We believe that the most powerful assistance that the government can provide to the community is in its purchasing power. And we understand the desire to build large facilities in the desert, but we also believe that it's important to invest a substantial portion of renewable energy purchases in the local region. And compared to large solar in the desert, this program benefits city businesses and workers. It allows participation by small and medium-sized businesses, and I think this is a really important aspect of the program. The large projects in the desert really are meant, they're really confined to large companies. It encourages the development of the solar energy industry in Los Angeles, and it has less environmental impacts. And I think that's something that people haven't discussed today, but it does have less environmental impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. James, and Jeffrey, then Argavan, and George Laporte, if you want to come on up? You still here, George? Yeah, come on up. Okay. Great, James.
Thank you, Councilmembers Perry and Krikorian. My name is James Brennan. I'm with Open Neighborhoods. I'm a homeowner in Mar Vista. I, along with another Mar Vista resident, created an organization called Open Neighborhoods a couple of years ago. We have a free Wi-Fi initiative. We do community advocacy in the neighborhood. We launched a clean energy program. Last year was our first year. We had, it was a community program for, to put solar on our own roofs as well as our neighbors. We got 120 people involved in the neighborhood, and ultimately, at the end of three months, 32 homeowners signed up to install solar over 105 kilowatts. We, this year, launched our second program. We did a competitive bidding process and negotiated a rate under $5 a watt, which is to the point where it is actually cost-competitive with utility-scale projects. Mar Vista since was the first, became the first neighborhood to set a goal of 100% clean electricity by 2018. We're also working with other neighborhoods as well as the Sierra Club. Last night, the Venice Neighborhood Council became the second neighborhood to set a goal of 100% clean electricity by 2018. We need to empower these communities to organize and achieve these goals, and we need to have a comprehensive solar program that does include a feed-in tariff. We have supported that. We've partnered with the Sierra Club and the LA Business Council to present the West Los Angeles Solar Tour as part of the National Solar Tour. And the community is very engaged and supportive, and we need to support that with a feed-in tariff program. We also need to be sensitive to the local communities and with concerns of energy sprawl for some of the ground-mounted panels. And then finally, with regard to some of the questions from Councilman Krikorian, as I mentioned, small-scale solar is now cost-competitive when it can be aggregated into larger purchases. There's a new report that came out titled Distributed Small-Scale Solar Competes With Large-Scale PV, out of the Institute for Local Self-Reliance's New Rules Project. Final point, with regard to the reliability, a new program report came out from the Department of Energy that big utilities can get reliable power from small solar PV arrays, and the factor is a factor of six times more reliable for small-scale solar sites distributed out over a large geographic area. So that's a factor of six to benefit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think, Argavan, you're next? And then Jeffrey, and then, can I get this out of order? George is the last speaker.
Yeah, mine is. I think he's next.
All right, all right, you're Jeffrey.
I'm Jeffrey.
Jeffrey, then Argavan, then George.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just want to say we appreciate this opportunity to be here today, and I do support the feed-in tariff put forward by the Los Angeles Business Council and UCLA Luskin Center. I'm Jeffrey Richardson, the president of Remont Energy. We are a solar installer, and we focus on empowering enterprise-owned communities. A key focus of our business is creating jobs, and we're actually working now to develop a manufacturing facility in Los Angeles, in South Los Angeles specifically. And one of the things that we see as important with the feed-in tariff is that it creates a market which is critical to the growth of the industry. In addition to that, to attract new businesses here, it's absolutely essential. I've talked with an entity that develops storage, and they actually went up north because they just said people in LA didn't get it. And there was more support, particularly from the investment community there. So we have a tremendous opportunity that we should not let pass us by. The great athlete, Arthur Hess, stated that you start where you are, use what you have, and do what you can. And in LA, we have a tremendous opportunity with significant sun resources, roof resources, and we have a critical need at a critical point in the economy of the country and the city. So it can be historic to transform the city, to create jobs, to generate income, and to make LA a leader in an area that it must be a leader and should be. It is the right thing to do, and the time to do it is now. All the things that have been said about the job creation, our focus in low-income and people-of-color communities is essential. This is the dynamic and the demographic of the city of Los Angeles. And to the extent that we lose this historic opportunity, years we will look back and say, this is where the city kind of just slid off. And we are in a critical moment as we know what the unemployment rate is. So solar, the feed-in tariff, is the opportunity. We must maximize it. We must do it now. We have the opportunity. Let's take the opportunity to do what is right for the city and really set an example for the nation.
Thank you. Argavan?
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to voice my opinion on this issue. I'm here as a private citizen. I do not represent any company or organization, but I'll let you know briefly what my interest is and why I'm here, supporting the FIT program. One is that I live in the valley and I'm the president of a homeowners' association, Board of Directors. And we were hit hard as any other organization or homeowners' association due to foreclosures. So our reserve funds and our operating fund went down, and we had to assess our members' additional fees, which was hard on everyone. So I decided to become involved, and we started using different greening programs, energy efficiency programs, to save us money, and we've done very well. In fact, we're in the process of installing solar panels on our rooftop. We have plenty of rooftop, and I would have liked to, for us, to install more than 100% so that we could eventually participate in a feed-in tariff program, and that would be a source of income, hopefully, if it's allowed for our entity to do that. It would be an extra source of income for us. And that's where my interest is. I'm particularly interested in communities that are economically underdeveloped in this city and for smaller entities, not large companies, to have a share of the money that's being made, but rather homeowners, small homeowners' associations, people who are suffering economically to have a chance to make money out of clean energy. And I encourage the council to adopt this program. In fact, as part of my studies, I'm studying global sustainability at UCLA. We have, studying this class and this particular program, that's another reason why I'm here. And a lot of us in the class felt that the program was not aggressive enough, that 600 megawatts is just too small and too shy. We need to go higher.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George is our last speaker. George Laporte.
Hi. Well, I echo the sentiments of everyone here, and I appreciate you all opening this up to everyone to speak about the feed-in tariff and the benefits that would be for the city of LA. I represent myself. I have a company called Eco Construction. I'm a very, very small company, but I was instrumental in putting the first white reflective roof coatings on the rec centers out in the San Fernando Valley back in the early 1990s, before anybody even heard of the word eco. That's how I got all my names. But anyway, it's great that the LA Business Council and UCLA put together this report. I've been at several of these hearings. It was brought up that it would be a $2 billion cost. A gal from the DWP said that that was kind of too much money, $200 million a year was a lot of money. And I brought up the point that that's about the cost of one feature film in Hollywood. And our power powers all those movies being made. The federal government just popped $2 billion to build a solar plant out in the desert on the, in Blythe on the border. So certainly, $2 billion is out there. And it also stated that the federal government was looking for programs to fund with a December 31st of this year deadline. So the money's there. People are interested. LA has stood up and said, hey, we want to be the leader in the green economy. The big sticking point is the DWP's loss of revenue, or perceived loss of revenue, from all these individuals having power generated from their rooftops. I think for security purposes, easing of the grid, it makes a lot of sense to have multiple sources of power. Every time there's a windstorm, the power goes out in the city of LA. If we were generating it here, that wouldn't happen. So I would really urge you guys to think of a way to fund these projects, either through the city, a combination partnership with the individuals as well, to make this happen because the money's there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, George, and thank you to all the speakers who've come today. I appreciate you taking the time to put your viewpoint on the record. And I also have a letter. I know Bill Luddy was here. I don't know if he's still here, but he gave his letter to be submitted as part of the official record. So what I'd like to do, and Mr. Krikorian, let me know whether you concur, is to take the information we have, look at, I almost envisioned a third column on the report. We have the LABC position, PA consulting, and then what we're lacking is the LADWP position. So we can kind of nail it down, as Andrew said, to get granular and see where we agree and where we still have some outstanding issues where we need to get far more specific. So I'd like to be able to ask the chief legislative analyst to do that for us and then have another committee meeting to do that and to see if we can achieve more detailed consensus before we move forward to council. So I think if we move forward to council now, we'll just get lost in the weeds and that. So.
Perhaps an opportune time would be, I understand that DWP will be presenting its IRP upon, once the board approves it, or at least reviews it initially, sometime next month, December?
And that would give you some time to integrate what we've done here today and what they've produced and to, you know, half the work, half the work's already done in terms of between LABC and PA. So what we're missing is the DWP piece.
Yeah. So perhaps as a matter of our office, working with the DWP, PA, LABC, see if we can coordinate some sort of, at least, initial meetings to see if there's a way to integrate this into what's being proposed by the IRP.
That'd be great.
And perhaps, you know, discuss that further when this matter, when the IRP comes.
But that's where we're going to have to end up anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would.
Okay. All right, you agree?
Makes sense.
All right, thanks. All right, well, thank you, everybody. If there's anybody here who wants to comment on an item that is not on the agenda during the public comment period, this would be the time to do that.